Let me just double check. Notice is hereby given of our meeting of the committee of the whole of Wisconsin Rapids Common Council to be held via remote video conferencing on Tuesday, December 8th, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Again, it's 5:24, 5:25 PM right now. We will call the meeting to order. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Jay Bemke is here. Ted Kubitschek is here. Mr. Dean Venerman. Mr. Scott Kellogg is here. Mr. Joe Zerflew is here. And who do we have? Mr. Jake Catnaw, you are in interweb world and Mr. Tom Raum as well. The only person that we are missing is Mr. Stephen Coath, and he is excused. With other people in the room are Mr. Shane Blazer, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Ryan Hartman, our HR manager, and Mr. Tyler Mickelson, our IT guy. We got him on deck just in case something else happens. So that was called to order. Item number two, discussion regarding sewer and water utility improvements for the proposed athletic complex at Lincoln High School. Discuss referral to the Finance and Property Committee regarding the city's participation in those improvements. So with that, I think we've got a guest who had been on the line last time, last city council meeting, and he would like to kind of give us a brief three to five minute overview of the project. Dan, Dan, are you with us?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Appreciate having me back and appreciate the opportunity to fill the city in on what's going on with this project. I'm wondering if we actually have a website that is available right now, and I'm wondering if that would be a, would provide some clarity for everybody. Is that something I could share the screen to show you?
Go ahead.
All right, can we see that?
Yes.
All right, so this is the landing page that we put together. Point of beginning, who's the architect firm as far as just helping you connect the dots on who all the parties are. Obviously, the school district is responsible as the, as the financial agent who is going to be ultimately responsible for the project, for owning it, maintaining it, and managing it. And through the collaboration with a bunch of other user groups, like some of the organizations that we showed you previously on the presentation, that's what led to the community involvement piece where thankfully through the generosity of the Legacy Foundation, they're willing to support a huge part of that. I'm gonna, there's a message here that Craig references here as the superintendent. And then, of course, this spreadsheet piece here basically lays out all of the parts or the components of this as far as on the top where you see the pledged funds right here. You scroll across to the right, you see the quadplex itself, track, football field, and then totals. And then if you scroll down, you see who's involved with the quadplex, who's involved with the track, who's involved with the football field, of course, the total again. So this is something where a lot of folks have been wondering about where, where is the project at? What's the projected cost? And who's involved so far? So you can see on the pledged funds on the top section, that's the group that is basically has money pledged and is ultimately involved in committed money to this point. The community fundraising part on the bottom is the part where we've got that broken down into a couple of different sections of whether it's just simply donations, which is monetary donations through naming rights, corporate backing, individuals. And then the next line item is the in-kind work. Contractors, there's also, we're throwing in that section there as well as cost avoidance. There's maybe some expenses that we're hoping don't happen, but Point of Beginning to be cautious and thorough has put those, put those line items in there because they've come up in other projects. So at the end of the day, you can see where the, how the, how the total cost looks and where the funding is and what the hope and goal is, is of trying to get the project accomplished. What our main mission of approaching the city is, is just simply stating is that from a design standpoint, when we're, when the goal is on the rendering, the quadplex is looking to ultimately get services put in somewhere, we're assuming off of Grove from the far south and come up between the two ball diamonds here, or to come in from the other side and come into here to the concession stand right here in the middle of the quad. So our first question just simply is, is that because we know we're very fortunate and blessed that the city actually has the resources that a lot of municipalities don't have, like engineering departments and stuff like that, and responsible for a lot of their own work, they probably would know what was gonna make the most sense as to where that would come from and just shed some light on it just so the construction estimates could be done or prepared as cost effectively and as appropriately as possible. Because ultimately, the goal is to try to get the city sanitary sewer, water, electrical, and natural gas put into that to accommodate all of the needs that the concession stand building is gonna have, which will not only be for just baseball and softball, but also for other activities going on throughout the complex, through the other seasons and sports and stuff that take place. Now, if there is an opportunity from an in-kind standpoint that makes sense, if the city was willing to be involved with it or partner with this project, obviously, that would be wonderful because it means more dollars from the grant and the fundraising that's being done could go into the project. And that's our only, that's our main goal, is just to try to get all of the improvements done we possibly can, to have the dollars go as far as we can, and to try to obtain the best possible outcome for our community. And that's where we just said, we know the city knows what they know. We would be foolish if we didn't ask and try to figure out what that is and where it fits and use those resources accordingly.
Thank you, Dan. Are you, are you available?
The last piece, I guess I would just add in clarity for you too, sorry, is a, this is just a summary from the presentation previously that maybe didn't come out as clear, is that there's three main points that this whole project is always focused on. One is community involvement, which is where all the user groups come in, as well as the district. Number two is the economic opportunity it creates by being able to host and run and hold events. And then thirdly is a sustainability plan that's always been in place from day one about how that would take place. And where the school is, the school district is obviously the owner and the host of it, but yet there's responsibilities by others as well. And so we obviously don't want this to be a tired facility some years down the road and then we're standing there not being able to take care of it the way it needs to be taken care of. So the site is available. It's rapidspride.com. And if you ever wanna take a peek at it, it's out there. We're basically today kind of got the official go-ahead. And we're waiting on one more specific item, I would say, where basically I just want you guys, those of you to know, you're kind of getting a preview of that. And then there's, of course, the naming rights opportunities for donors to participate throughout the community and whatnot. This is an example of what that would look like. And then, of course, our contact information down here on the bottom. There is some fundraising expectations down here on the far bottom left, and that detail will continue to be updated, as well as the spreadsheet with the other parts of the facility as time goes on. So that's the whole background on it in a nutshell.
Wonderful, Dan. Thank you. And are you able to give us a little bit of time if there's any questions by any of the council members?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll stick around to the end.
Wonderful. So what we're gonna do is we'll kind of do this in an orderly fashion. I'll call on...
Did you notice that there was a chat message from Joe?
I guess, and especially presiding over the meeting, I'll be a kind of moderator here right off the bat. Public Works Director, Mr. Terry posted via chat. It says, "The most recent conceptual sketch from Point of Beginning has utilities coming from the north off of Pepper Street."
And that's just part of the process of just asking, I don't know that they know what they know either, and we're just wondering, does the city know something that's way more appropriate that would make way more sense? And we would, and it's really, this is a fact-finding session for us to just really find out what the city knows that we should know to try to put this detail into the, into the design as we go forward.
Okay, so then...
Mr. Kubitschek, can I speak, please?
Mr. Catnaw, I was gonna kind of do it in a, in a manner, I was gonna call everybody, but I'll give you the first opportunity, absolutely, Jake, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Guck, my understanding is you're just looking for the city to run utilities, this facility, is that correct?
Yeah, ultimately, the ultimate ask would be is to help with the project to obtain the sewer, gas, water, or electric services as possible to get it into the location needed by the concession stand.
And then after that, the district would take responsibility for any other costs?
Correct.
Okay. And then my other question would just be, how much did you, do we have a better estimate or is that gonna come up to the city engineers or, I know you have a private company that gave you an estimate, but...
We're, we're not that far, other than just construction estimates that, you know, Point of Beginning just said based on hypothetical. So that's where we would just rely on your expertise. And we know you guys, well, do it for a living, and so that's, that's where we knew you'd be the best resource.
So in my opinion, I'm in favor of this if it's just utilities that were running to this facility and they have the funding to build it for themselves and they do their own fundraising. If we just do utilities, I'm in favor of that. I think this would bring a lot of business to town for many years with baseball tournaments, et cetera. So that's where I stand on it, and I'm done.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask what the chat, chat thing was from Joe? I missed that.
Yeah, give me a moment here, Tom. Jake, thank you. And what I'll do is, and Tom, if you're listening to, what I'll do is, at times you can go next here. What I'll do is try and make this as orderly as possible, so I'll give everybody a chance. And then I'll come back around so that if you have like a second thought or something that you missed or forgot or wanted to follow up, but I want to try and do this orderly. But Mr. Catnaw, so I'll, I'll come back around. If you don't have anything when I call on you, then just say, "No, thank you," and then we'll move on. So Mr. Raum, I will repeat the question or the chat that was posed by Mr. Terry. It said, "The most recent conceptual sketch from Point of Beginning." Point of Beginning is our, the serving engineering company in town. Point of Beginning has the utilities coming from the north off of Pepper Street. It doesn't say street on there, it just said pepper. I assume that it's Pepper Street.
So that means not Grove.
I don't, I'm just reading it. I'm not interpreting it. That's just what it says, so.
Yeah, and there was also another example of a directional bore, I believe, from Grove Street underneath the parking lot, so to speak, by the hockey rink, and then going diagonally into the quadplex on the very southern end. And there again, just through some preliminary discussions, it didn't sound like that was the most practical either. There might have been enough, a better option, but again, certainly not the one to make that decision. Just, again, fact-finding.
Mr. Raum, do you have, and again, I'll come back to you, or we'll come all the way back around. Do you have anything right now? You've got the floor right now.
Yeah, I think we need a lot more information on this before it's sent to the Finance Committee or whoever, and that's, as Dan has mentioned, is fact-finding, and that I think you find out, you have to find out facts, get the facts before you go and ask for the money and where's the money actually, what it, actually it's gonna be and that type of thing. I think we'll, I don't know that anybody's talking against the project per se. It's just that, I think, again, I think, and I made the statement a couple few weeks ago, is that we're way putting the cart ahead of the horse. We need more information on it before this has to be done. There's permits and everything that have to be acquired. We just don't go ahead and do it. It's not just to say the city, okay. There's a lot more that has to be done then. And so this is on, this thing has been put on work speed to move along because they wanna throw it off the bit. We have to know a heck of a lot more than what we know. And it shouldn't be up to the city to come up and say what it should be. They should have more of a definition of what they want, where it's gonna be, and then we have to find out if it's legal that we can even do it. I think we're jumping ahead of the gun, and I don't wanna be there and somebody pulls the trigger. There has to be contracts drawn up and everything else. That doesn't have to be all done before the project could start, but the intent of what is there has to be talked about. That should all be talked about before anything is done. And everything sounds button great, but if it is all signed and sealed and delivered down the road, if it's not done right, you're putting the city, you're putting the city in total danger of whatever. And don't say, "If I ain't gonna get sued now, if it ain't done right, it can get sued later." So that's how we're gonna base things on, I guess that's how we do it. I'm just saying, I'm not saying I'm against it. I just think we need more information before we proceed with this. And I know why this is, I'm guessing why this was put on the agenda. So I'm just saying that we need more information on that. And also with that, and I shouldn't lose my time, because I don't think we really have time for the alderman, but if Mr. Terry is still there and would like to say anything, he can, and if I recognize him, that doesn't mean I'm giving up my time to speak. Because I think we need the professionals that deal with that in public works. They're the ones who then, they get the information from the group that wants to do this. And they should have discussions between themselves and who's ever involved, with somebody off of committee or whatever, to talk about whatever. And just like we do on the committee of public works, every item that's on the agenda, there's a description of what is recommended or not recommended. So I think we're jumping way ahead of everything. You gotta just step back a coup, take a couple steps backwards. That doesn't mean you put it on backward and forget about it. We just need more info on what it is and the groups in private. Not necessarily in private may not be the right word, but they should be discussing what the plan is. Just don't come forward with a plan and that we're supposed to heart-blatch, say yes and go ahead. So then if Mr. Terry's there, I would, I would, I would like to have him say a few words because there's a lot more to this than just saying, "Move forward."
We're gonna continue with council members first. Mr. Raum, we can recognize other people later on, but right now, this is the committee of the whole of the Common Council. So do you have anything further? Otherwise, I'll go on to another council member.
Go on, go on.
Okay. Is there anybody? Mr. Bemke, do you have anything?
I do. So, Mr. Guck, I have a couple of questions maybe for you. First of all, if I understand your presentation, part of your presentation to answer maybe what Alderman Raum had just suggested is, part of the reason you're coming to us now is looking for some guidance from engineering. Is that correct? So I guess after what I just heard, they're coming to us looking for guidance. This is how we're starting the discussion. I think we have to start someplace. I think this is a great place to start. I just have one more question for you. You mentioned the possibility of some activities, outside activities being there. Have you guys looked at the impact or what kind of activities, what kind of uses these fields could have once this project's done?
Yeah, we actually did some, there's some studies and when we did the presentations at the PAC in 2018 when we first approached the Legacy Foundation then. And we had statistics then, and this was just from like, as an example, RISA or Legion Baseball alone, just in the summertime as far as extra opportunities. And, you know, those numbers were, when you, and this isn't our calculation, this is the Visitors and Convention Bureau from Rapid and Point did these separately. But these numbers are, are in the hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars when you look at a weekend and the ripple effect of what it does for people coming here, staying here, the hotels, the gas, the groceries, you know, the, and the restaurants. So those numbers are there. We've actually got presentations on that stuff that we can show you, but it is quite dated because it was from 2012 studies back even when Stevens Point did their numbers. We, we basically, Laura Nelson was back at that time involved with the Visitors and Convention Bureau. I think the neat thing that we're gonna see is, is that it's basically, for a lot of folks who are used to Calner, is the, you're basically taking the exact same experience and you're actually now doing it in the, with not only the Lincoln High School footprint, but you're also including assumptions and possibly Port Edwards to be involved. That collaborative piece is basically what is, in my mind, and I don't wanna speak out of turn here, but if Mr. Bowby was here, I would say that, you know, part of the reason why the Legacy Foundation really believes this is a great improvement to the community. So we know, so Point of Beginning does have a lot of that, the drawings and the schematics and everything. And some of that stuff, I believe, if Joe's here, that'd be great to talk to him because I think that they've been working on getting some of that data to him.
Mr. Bemke, are you...
He's gone. We lost him.
Who?
There's no...
Oh, Dan?
Yeah.
Dan, we cannot hear you for some reason. We have been having technical difficulties all night.
Can you hear me?
We can now, yeah.
Oh, you trailed off there. We thought maybe you, we couldn't hear you.
So we're just, but yes, we do know that there is, you know, that's the goal, is to basically keep it full and use it. We've had fortunately UW Stout and the Pointers have reached out and said they'd love to rent it if they, if we built it. And then we look at the fact that we know that Wildwood down in Boston and down in the Dells, they've got the same type of facilities, but I would bet that if we know, those are privately owned. And we know what their price points are because our kids travel down there and pay for those fees, right out of our own high school pays for this expense. Our district, our taxpayer dollars. So if we're 45 minutes closer and we could have, let's say, Tomahawk and Medford would rather come here and travel and meet here and say 45 minutes one way on the way down and maybe rent our facility, those dollars go into our sustainability fund, help offset costs, and then, you know, be that much closer to home on the way home, we're starting to, taking advantage of our central location. And those are all of the, a lot of the attributes about what's kind of led to this.
Mr. Chairman, another point of order. And I think I have the right to do that.
What's your point of order?
Discussion of reading sewer and water utility improvements for the proposed athletic complex at Lincoln. I think the selling point has been done in the past.
What's your point of order?
It's up to the committee, up to the committee, the council, whatever, to decide on what to do.
What's your point of order?
The selling point, the selling point's been...
I'm gonna ask you one more time and we're gonna cut you off.
And the point of order can be...
What's your point of order?
We're way off what the agenda says.
What are you saying that we're off on?
Because it's just discussion regarding sewer and water utility improvements. We're not here to sell the project.
I asked a question.
We're here, we're...
Mr. Bemke asked a question, Mr. Raum. He had the floor, okay?
I made a point of order.
What's, what's the point of order? Why are we out of order?
All I'm gonna say, all I'm gonna say, quit trying to just shut me up, okay? The point of order is what the agenda says.
No, you're interrupting this meeting of the Common Council. This is not the meeting of Tom Raum. This is the meeting of the City Council of Wisconsin Rapids, okay? There's seven other members on this body, okay? And one of those members had the floor.
I agree with that. I agree with that. I just made the point of order and I wish you'd listened to that. Who can say you disagree with that? But I have a right to make the point of order.
I disagree with you. Mr. Bemke, you have the floor right now.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Guck again for his patience and his presentation, and I am finished for now.
Thank you. I'll go on to this side of the room. Does anybody specifically want to speak first? I don't have any favorites, so I mean whoever...
I'll go. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, as I, along with Mr. Catnaw, I'm in favor of this project, and along with the questions that Mr. Bemke asked, seems to me that they are looking for guidance. And that's our job to provide that guidance. And in terms of what we are on the hook for, it sounds like if we decided to go through with this, we'd be on the hook for the moving the sewer and gutter and electric and properly getting it to that concession stand. Other than that, we're, I think we're just fortunate to be in a community that has this charitable foundation such as Legacy that are willing to put this kind of money forward for a project of that that could bring a huge tax base to this town. And so as far as I'm concerned, I'm in favor of at least looking into what that would take and as Mr. Bemke put it, helping provide the guidance for what they, to what they need to move forward with this project. And I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Venerman. Mr. Zerflew or Mr. Kellogg? I think Mr. Kellogg, you were kind of chopping at the bit.
Yeah, I'm in favor as well. I think it's gonna bring quite a, it's gonna be a big influence with, with regard to the city. As is mentioned, is we're centrally located, you're gonna have quite a few people coming to Wisconsin Rapids, spending their money in Wisconsin Rapids. And I, I'm in favor of it. I know Mr. Raum was talking about, we don't know exactly the cost, et cetera, but this is the start. This, when do you start but now? And I think that's exactly why we're meeting. And I think Joe Terry has to get more specific as to the cost, et cetera, but when do you start but right now? So I'm in favor of the concept, and I'm anxious to find out the cost and hopefully can go forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Mr. Zerflew. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I also agree with this project. And I agree with Tom in the sense that, you know, at some point, and I think it's, it's probably prudent that Joe Terry, Paul Volart, Point of Beginning, Dan Guck, they sit down and they look at the project, look at the layout, find out, you know, what I've heard is, you know, if you're coming off Grove versus Pepper, Grove is a lot deeper, dewatering. And I think that's really a conversation that Joe and Paul can have with Point of Beginning so they can figure out, okay, which, which route is the best to go in there, then figure out the cost, and then I think we'll have our answers then. But I think it needs to start there. But I definitely support the project also. Thank you.
Okay, real quick, go right around one more time with the council members. Jake Catnaw, Mr. Catnaw, do you have anything or no?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kubitschek. I would just like to mention that I appreciate the Legacy Foundation donating... Uh, I would just like to mention that I appreciate the Legacy Foundation donating this amount of money to our community in these fields with our local school district. Um, we do also have the Aquatic Center, we're looking for donations for, and I'd like to link to access, we're donating to that, that was, um, very generous to them. And I'd like to make a motion to approve that the, uh, Public Works, Joe Terry, we, we do a estimate on this and we, we, the, ju- meet together with Mr. Guck and the rest of his committee and determine what we need to do here to get these utilities to there. I don't, I'm, I'm only in favor of the utilities at this point, uh, but I would like to sit down and see exactly what that cost would be.
Thank you, Mr. Katna, there's a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, there is a second.
Don't we get to talk, don't we get to talk second time?
Yes, y- yes.
Okay.
Goodness.
I'm not disagreeing with a lot that's been said.
Please.
I get the point.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Katna, there's a-
Okay, I just asked if I could speak a second time, that's all.
Oh my goodness, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Katna, second by Mr. Dean Veneman, um, and we will continue discussion and we're gonna continue in the rotation that we had. Uh, and also, I'm gonna preemptively say this, Mr. Raum, just so that you feel comfortable that I will allow Mr. Joe Terry to speak on this after all the council members, um, go through. So you don't need to repeat yourself that you want to yield time, time will be yielded. So, um, you've got one more opportunity here, um, to speak on this project, Mr. Raum.
Right now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. And that's, that's what I'm trying to say is, you know, that's why I don't think that you go to finance or whichever committee now. Let's get the group together and talk about what is really wanted and where. Like I said, I don't think people are speaking against it. My question is, where are we? And what, and the cost, that becomes part of it. But you ain't gonna get to that and tell you, thing is actually not designed, but more into the process of what, what and where it all is to be. And that's why the group should talk about it, then come back, then see where, what to do with it, what committee to send it to. I don't think you send it to finance till you have something before to send it to finance. Because right now you have nothing to send to finance.
That wasn't what the motion was.
Well, I thought we just had a second chance to talk on whatever. I know the motion was made, but at the start of it, you said that we'd have a second go around.
You have your opportunity right now, Mr. Raum.
And that, well, that's what I'm trying to do, so don't say I'm not talking about the motion was, I'm just saying that we had a second go around.
Did I say anything?
What's being, you know, what's being said now, some of the people here, is what I was saying, is that we have to look at what all the things is and that, that's, I think that the talk, the initial negotiations, half the, the group has to sit down with the city, discuss what they want, actually where it's gonna come in from, that type of stuff. And I think everybody has to realize there has to be permanent supply, as I said before, and all that type of stuff. And then we have to decide where it's gonna come in from. Is it legal? And is it, then it, it, does it become legal that we can donate, uh, actually it'd be, uh, I'm gonna call it private business? And that's, there's a lot more questions to answer before we advance this thing along, so, um, I probably, I, I, I think you people know where I'm coming from, cope and understand what I'm talking about. Not against the project per se, but I don't think you jump right in without knowing more about, uh, how you, uh, exactly is being talked about the utilities. And to say that we appreciate whatever who gives, donates money, yes, I appreciate that too. That's not what the issue is. That money's there. The issue to me, and that's what it is, and that's sewer and water utility improvement, so that's, um, that's what, that should be, that should be discussed between whatever group is set up. And then come back to the council and see what, then see what the council, how they want to advance it along, to which committee it is, if it's finance or whoever. Uh, and that's, that's all it is. I'm agreeing with comments that people are making, I'm just saying that I think we're jumping ahead of where we should be, so with that, uh, with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, let you continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Raum, Mr. Bemke, coming back around to you.
So, again, I'd just like to point out, I don't want to beat dead, beat a dead horse, but this was the attempt to get the conversation started, and I just would like it to be made public that there were two attempts to get this into the Public Works Committee and both attempts failed. So I guess with that being said, um, if nobody else objects, maybe I-
It didn't fail.
It never made the agenda, Mr. Raum. We, we need to start the conversation and that's where we're at right now. And moving on from that, um, I would like to hear from Mr. Terry, Mr. Volart before, if nobody else objects, um, before we finish our comments.
Is there any objection? Does anybody want to speak prior to yielding time to Public Works? With that being said-
I could please, Mr. Kubitschak.
Who's, who's, who, uh, Mr. Katna, go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, my motion is to direct city staff to give us a estimate and basically inspect what it would take to put the utilities into the field. And then that, whatever comes from that, that estimate would go to, what the committee it could go to, which I assume would be finance at that point. Um, that would, that's my motion, shorter and sweeter, uh, but I just wanted to clear that up if there's any confusion.
Thank you, Mr. Katna, I think we had that actually written down, that your, your motion is duly noted and your explanation is duly noted, thank you. Um, with that being said, is there anybody, any representatives from the Public Works Department with us?
Yeah, so this is Joe Terry, I'm, I'm here.
Go ahead, Mr. Terry, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I did, uh, have a conversation with, uh, Scott Grohinsky of Point of Beginning after the council meeting in November, just to talk a little bit about the project, where it's at from a design standpoint, um, and, and to ask some questions. And so one of those questions were, was how, how far along is the design? If we're ready to build here, um, in the spring, uh, you know, so far we've seen a concept sketch, we have not seen any, any real plans. Um, and, and really in order to facilitate and get utilities onsite, we need to see some type of a plan, something more than a conceptual, conceptual sketch. And so, um, Scott had mentioned that, well, the concept sketch that we had was very preliminary, that, uh, you know, the, the sewer and water service off of Grove would not serve our master plan of the project, and that, uh, more likely would have to come off of Pepper and, um, you know, and, and run that way. And so it's, it's easy to say, let's say I have the engineering department come up with some estimates, um, but we do need a more refined scope of what, what that means. Um, what, what, what size of pipes do we need to extend out? Um, is the expectation that the city's gonna do that design? Um, or is that gonna be through Point of Beginning? When I, when I talked with Scott from P O B, you know, his understanding is that they would be doing the final design of the project and then would be able to offer that information to the city. Well, at that point, um, those estimates would be much more straightforward. The other question I had was, when we talk about, uh, installing utilities to the site, the city installs utilities to the right of way. And if we're looking at installing it beyond that, uh, we need to know that as well, obviously that would make a dramatic difference in whatever kind of estimate, um, there would be, and it would also, uh, and I have, I've made an inquiry with Attorney Schill, but we have yet to sit down and talk about it as far as the, uh, logistics of some type of an intergovernmental agreement if it's, uh, allowed for a municipality to perform what otherwise would be, uh, contractors' work, um, outside of the right of way. So there's, there are some logistical things that we would need to sort out, um, before we can really dedicate much time to it. And if we came up with a number of different, um, scenarios and cost estimates, there's a real cost to that too. Our engineering department is, uh, is full steam ahead, trying to get our plans ready for our spring projects. And, uh, and we're behind where I'd like to be. Um, but if we're gonna make this project a priority, knowing when the construction is gonna be, also may, uh, have some impact on our local project, so, um, we can adjust priorities to the, you know, to the will of the council. We just need to know, um, you know, what the expectations are in order to do that. Thank you.
Other thoughts by the remainder of the council, Mr. Veneman or Mr. Kellogg? Do you guys have any other thoughts? Mr. Zerflue, I think, left the room for a moment. Um, I, as a chairperson, um, I'm not necessarily, I, I don't have a stance either way, I, I don't have any children in town, it isn't something that this is gonna benefit me. But I think one of the challenges that we do face and a lot of communities face is we, is some communities, uh, try and find every excuse not to do a project, and some communities find every excuse to do a project that could benefit the community. And I think that, um, whatever the merits are, um, this is definitely a, a project worth exploring, regardless, um, uh, if, if people are gonna utilize it. For example, I mean, I, I don't have children, so why should I pay a school tax? Well, it, it, you know, it isn't as cut and dry as that. And I actually, uh, am proud to pay a school tax, I'm proud to pay tax to our school district, our tech school district, our county and our city. Um, so it, it isn't just about monies with one tax and jurisdiction, but it, let's, let's find some excuses why we can get something off the ground, whether this project does happen or not. Um, just because it, there might be a technicality here or there, let's not let it hang us up. Uh, Mr. Zerflue just walked into the room, do you have any thoughts or I'll, I'll give you the floor?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Um, with that, there is a motion on the floor and a second. Um, I think that we've kind of exhausted discussion unless anybody's got any final thoughts. Um, uh, and I will put that to a vote. Um, uh, and, and let me read back the motion. And basically, Mr. Katna, you made the motion to, um, have our Public Works Department or compel our Public Works Department to work with this project, the stakeholders in this project, to find some kind of monetary, um, uh, estimate moving forward of what, what we would be obligated to approve once it gets sent to finance or a, 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 a figure to send to finance for an up or down vote. There, is that correct, Mr., uh, Mr. Katna?
Yes, that is correct, an assessment of the project and then an amount of the approximate money that the city would spend to put utilities into the project. Again, I would just like to remind people, I mean, this is gonna be something that would bring money to the community for years.
Absolutely.
But that is my motion, an assessment, and then I would like an amount that would go committee and then we can take it to Common Council.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Katna. So therefore, uh, there's a motion on the floor, a second, all those in favor, and I'll do a roll call vote just because we've got almost everybody here. Uh, all those in, I'm sorry, roll call vote, Mr. Bemke, up or down?
Up.
Uh, Mr. Zerflue?
Aye.
Mr. Kellogg?
Aye.
Mr. Veneman?
Aye.
Mr. Raum?
Oh, on behalf of what Mr. Terry said.
You what happened?
Couldn't hear him. I believe he said no on behalf of Mr. Terry said, I think.
Okay, so you said no, Mr. Raum?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
Um, I just got you to say yes, Tom. Um, Mr. Katna, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, so we've got six ayes, one nay, um, the motion carries. Um, then, uh, item number, we just finished item number two, so we'll go on to item number three then. Discuss and consider for approval changing the reporting structure for the airport manager position? No, I'm sorry, that's the wrong agenda. We already took care of that business. I think the other agenda item is discussion and approval of measures to reduce the possible impact of COVID-19. And this was one thing for anybody, uh, questioning, I'll, I'll quick, give a, a brief, uh, explanation on this. Mr. Stephen Colth, um, uh, council member had, uh, asked about this and, and he's excused tonight, um, but this was something I think what, what other organizations are looking at, if it's something, and, and I don't know if it was internal or external, if it was something citywide, um, that he was looking at, or if it was just internally, if we could do other things that could mitigate, um, the spread of COVID-19. And, and while we have this on here, because it doesn't explicitly say it one way or the other, if, if anybody has got any questions, concerns on that or best practices that we could be doing as an organization, you know, I'll, otherwise what we'll do is because Mr. Colth is not here, we'll recycle this and we'll either have it on, uh, this is something that we could possibly have at the next H R committee, on the next H R committee agenda as well, so does anybody have any-
Mr. Kubitschak?
Yes, Mr. Katna, go ahead.
I would just like to comment that we have gave the mayor the power to, um, do anything necessary that he feels he needs to do to protect, you know, City Hall or anything of city assets to do. I think we, we have taken necessary steps. Uh, we've renewed that power as a council for several months. I, 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 I think we're doing a good job as much as we can, as much as any other municipality
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Katna, that is a fact that, and one of the latest things that, uh, City Hall has done is actually we have limited access to the public as well. Um, uh, so with that being said, without having Mr. Colth here, um, does anybody have anything further on this particular item? With that being said, um, we don't have anything to approve for item number three, so then we'll move on to item number four, adjournment. So do I have a motion for adjournment? Uh, Mr. Bemke, motion, second by Mr. Veneman, uh, to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Uh, ayes have it, seven to zero, we are adjourning the meeting at six thirteen P M. Thank you, everybody.